The time is 6:01. This is a special closed session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryor Force?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr is absent. And Mayor Mora?
Here. Members, any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move to public comment on closed session items. Seeing no members of the public, we will now close public comment and move to the closed session. We'll be taking items 5.1 and 5.2 in closed session. The time is 6:02.
Recording stopped.
The time is 6:12. We are now reporting from closed session. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Mora. On a motion by Vice Mayor Carr, which was seconded by Councilmember Solomon, the council voted five to zero to authorize the city attorney to join as amicus curi in the matter of the state of Illinois versus Donald J. Trump, case number 25-2798, filed on behalf of local governments and local government leaders in support of Apolise's response to emergency motion for stay pending appeal before the United States Supreme Court involving the deployment of National Guard troops in the city of Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The time is 6:13. This meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will start in two minutes. The time is 6:16. This is a special session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryor Force?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here.
Thank you.
Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Pryor Force?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye. Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, we'll now move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda? Seeing no members of the public in the room, we will close that item and move on to item six, 6.1, our study session on revenue measures for 2026.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Sharon Friedrichsen, Finance Director. I have with me Brian Mora with RGS, and on Zoom, we have Eric Myers with HDL to help answer any technical questions on business license. We may also be joined by Sarah Maris for NBS as well. Next slide, please. And this evening, we'll start with a little bit of context in terms of why this item is on the study session. We'll then go into discussion of several revenue options and then return for discussion and preliminary direction from council. Again, the intent is to receive initial direction on a possible placement of a revenue measure or measures on the November 2026 election. Next slide. Again, in terms of background, in the spring, the city council engaged in a strategic planning work plan. One of the top priorities from that strategic plan was to research potential revenue measures for 2026. This, of course, aligned with the adoption and the deliberation of the biennial budget for fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '27. As part of the budget process, the general fund was projected to face a structural deficit, both for '26, '27 and the out years, whereas expenditures outpaced revenues. You can see the projected surplus or deficit at that time ranging from $8 million to upwards of $13 million over the next five years. Next slide. Before we talk about the revenue options, it's important to really think through a fiscal sustainability approach. Again, one of the council priorities, in addition to researching revenue measures, was to engage in cost recovery and auditing efforts. The finance team has been working with consultants on our business tax and our sales tax and our utility user tax to make sure that we are recovering our taxes through compliance and discovery audits. We've generated about $1 million through those efforts. We'll also be kicking off a updated master fee schedule, looking at our fees and our cost allocation plan in the start of the new year. In fiscal year '24 and '25, we have achieved savings as part of expenditure control, largely due to keeping vacant positions, vacant positions unfilled. In terms of economic development, our community development department has brought on a management analyst. They'll also be presenting on some of the work related to the small business community to council shortly. In terms of grants, we have issued an RFP and received six proposals for grant writing assistance that we're currently evaluating. And again, tonight is about talking about revenue enhancement. It should be noted that many cities, including our neighbor in Oakland, are considering revenue measures in 2026. On the other hand, we also have a potential initiative coming forward from the Howard Jarvis Initiative that could potentially eliminate the property transfer tax, which is quite a significant revenue source. So again, while we're talking about ways to potentially enhance the revenue, it's important to be aware of other efforts underway that may mitigate or diminish some of our revenue abilities. Next slide, please. So the first option we'll look at is our business license tax modernization. Again, we'll have a couple of slides to talk about where we currently are with our business license tax, and then we'll look at two models. Again, at this point in time, our current rate structure is $1 per 1,000 gross receipts. Our business license tax is about 14% of our general fund revenue, and it's budgeted at about $6.6 million. We're expecting it to be flat in the out years without any change. Next slide, please. So again, before we look at possible models and scenarios, it's important to look at where we're at right now. You can see on this slide that our business tax revenue has been declining from about $7.4 million in '22, '23 down to, again, that $6.6 million that I referenced. Next slide, please. However, on the positive note, our business count remains fairly consistent, and you can see actually our businesses located within the city's boundary is fairly consistent, and we also are bringing in incremental amounts of business tax related to businesses that are located outside of Emeryville. Next slide. Again, as I noted, most of our businesses are taxed at $1 per 1,000 in gross receipts. Our ordinance currently has 56 business classifications. However, about 33 of those classifications are 60% do not have any businesses in that category. So again, as part of the effort, hence why we're calling this a modernization, there can be opportunities to also streamline our ordinance. And it's also worth noting that business also pays some other incremental fees outside of the business license tax. Next slide. Again, we looked at that chart that showed that we have 3,190 businesses. This chart just depicts the count by the rate type, and you can see we have quite a varied tax type by these different categories. Next slide. And this slide shows the revenue generated by business tax. Again, if you look at the pie chart and start at 12 o'clock, you can see the commercial rental property is about 18%, moving down the pie chart, research and development, about 12%, healthcare, 8%, manufacturing and movie and TV productions, and general contractor, 7%, respectively. Retail sales, 5%, and you can see the other categories, and again, that catch-all, given all our business classifications represented by all other of 25%. Next slide. And also important to note that of our top 100 businesses account for 74% of the city's business activity and 71% of the total tax collected. In speaking with our consultant, this is typical. A lot of cities, the top 100, generate between 60% to 70%. And again, we'll have our consultant available for any questions. we'll have our consultant available for any questions. Next slide. As part of our study, we wanted to look at how Emeryville compared to several other cities. We looked at a few of our neighboring cities as well as other cities based on business composition, geography, population. This is just a high-level snapshot. You can see the business count for the various cities. We took the business tax revenue and tried to do an apples-to-apples comparison by looking at revenue per capita and revenue per business, and more importantly, the date the ordinance was last modified. You can see for Emeryville, it was 1984, when originally passed by the voters. You can see the tax base, either gross receipts, which is a model that is based on outputs. It's based on how well a business performs, although some cities do per employee. The benefit there is it's based on input employees. It might be a little more constant, but it doesn't generate typically as much revenue. And again, whether or not the city had a cap as part of their ordinance. Next slide. Another snapshot of Emeryville compared to the other cities, you'll notice in particular the dip or decline in Emeryville during the pandemic and how great that is when you look at the other cities, that it seemed to be a little more streamlined as well. Next slide, please. Again, we tried to then look at three cities in particular, again, based on population size, geographic proximity, the tax structure, the business composition. We thought this was a good blend to be able to have comparable demographics, regional economic conditions, and looking at the types of tax levy to allow for a really accurate, meaningful, and relevant benchmarking for this discussion. Next slide. Snapshot of the rate calculations, again, by business classification. You can see the variance between Emeryville and the other cities, again, quite a range in terms of the gross receipts, and in the case of Walnut Creek, quite a few of flat rates or the use of employee rate instead. Next slide. And then we looked at the same cities under a hypothetical tax scenario in terms of what a business of that type with a gross receipts of that amount would be assessed based on the rate structure. And again, you can see the variance across the various cities. Next slide, please. And then we looked at the two, three cities, Berkeley, South San Francisco, and Walnut Creek, and looked at the estimated revenue. So what this chart illustrates is, for example, if you were a consulting firm that generated $1.8 million in gross receipts and had 12 employees, you currently would pay $1,800 in Emeryville. Again, we're $1,000 per gross receipt. You would pay $6,480 in Berkeley. You'd pay $3,300 in South San Francisco, and only $622 in Walnut Creek, again, because their rate structure is based on that employee count. So you can use that same logic and see what the different businesses would pay in Emeryville now and the comparison cities. Next slide. Now we'll move on to the models. Next slide, please. So our first option under our business license tax modernization is option A, the single gross receipt rate model. What this means is that there would be one gross receipt rate for all businesses. There would be a small minimum fee. Our exempt business definition would stay unchanged, and it would remove the current taxation cap that we have in place. The benefits is this is simple. A business will know what they will pay because it's the same gross receipt rate for every business. It increases equity. It increases revenue, and again, it simplifies our current ordinance. The trade-off is that it does not consider business type in determining rates. Next slide. Again, as a starting point, we modeled what these options would look like if we assessed a flat rate of $25, up to 25,000 gross receipts, and then we changed our $1 to $1.50, which you can see in option numeral one, and then we increased it to $2 in option numeral two. And you can see the increased revenue incremental amount of about $937,000 under the first option, and upwards of $3.4 million additional revenue under the second scenario. Again, the number of businesses remain the same, so even if we take those 56 categories and consolidate, we're still keeping the number of businesses the same, so that revenue is really based on the rate structure. Next slide. The second, option B, is variable gross receipts. As the name implies, it's variable. It removes the special or specific categories in our current code to five base categories plus exemption, and same as model A, it also removes the current taxation cap. Again, the advantage is simple. There's five categories. Again, as you may recall from the earlier slide, 33, out of our 56 business categories, 33 have zero businesses in it. It does also increase revenue, and the trade-off here potentially is that businesses with multiple tax types may need multiple business license, or it could be considered unfair if the rate is significantly different among the business types. Next slide. And here is a hypothetical model for option one and two. Again, taking these five categories, we really worked with HDL, our consultant, to come up with some modeling to really balance equity and revenue generation, particularly looking at businesses that contribute to our revenue already. For example, you'll notice in this model, the general retail category is projected to pay less. This is largely because general retail contributes to our sales tax. In fact, they make up 37% of our transaction type for sales. On the other hand, a lot of professional services aren't subject to sales tax, and so this model shows a higher amount. Again, the rates that are put in place is largely up to council as long as there's a plausible, rational basis for making a distinction between those rates, and we can talk about that more as we move through the presentation. Next slide, please. And this is what the modeling would look like. Again, you can see that the contractor business type has 719 businesses. Currently, the tax generates about $481,000. You can see the proportional increase to $745,000, and then upwards of $1.1 million under the models. And again, you'll note that under this scenario, as previously indicated, general retail would actually generate less revenue, but it would be offset by increased revenue in those other sectors. In total, the first model could increase revenue upwards of $3.3 million. That would be on top of our existing projected $6.6 million, bringing us upwards to $9.9 million. And under the second option, a very substantial increase, almost doubling of our current taxes to about $13.3 million. Next slide. And then we wanted to look at what those rates would look like compared to our other cities. So you can see, again, hypothetically, if you were the consulting firm with gross receipts of $1.8 million and had 12 employees, as we went over earlier, you currently would pay $1,800. You can see that under the different four options we looked at, the proportional increase all the way up to $7,125 under our option two of the variable gross receipts, almost comparable with Berkeley, less than Oakland, although we'd like to note that Oakland is actually considering looking at business license tax to address their deficit. This currently reflects the current rates. You can see South San Francisco at $3,300, and then Walnut Creek. And again, if you look through some of these categories, in particular, the third line, biotech, research and development, you can see a fairly sizable increase from what we currently assess compared to, say, option two of the variable gross. That would bring us to $999,000, but pretty close to Berkeley. Next slide, please. We also wanted to look at the impacts of the tax, taxation cap. Again, as the revenue increases, the number of businesses that would be affected by a cap would grow, and under these options, you can see the businesses would increase from one to upwards from, all the way up to four under option A, the single gross receipt option two, and you can see the revenue impact as well. Next slide, please. Before we move to parcel tax, we do have our consultant with HDL. If it pleases the mayor and council, I would suggest we can take technical questions on business license and then move on to the revenue, other revenue options.
I think that makes sense. Members, are there any clarifying questions on option one, the business license tax modernization? Member Pryforce?
First, I thank you, Mayor, for portioning this out, because this is going to be a lot, folks, and a lot of our questions, I'd rather we deal with them now than at the end, and then we have a whole bunch of questions. So the, and it was something that when this was presented before me, I had some concerns around during moments when the word unfair would come up, whether it was the variable gross receipts, or in any way, businesses felt, business leaders felt that there are multiple businesses would have, would be impacted by these changes. And I believe I shared, recommended that conversation happen with the city attorney's office to see if that unfairness could come back to haunt us, and what was that, I guess, result of that discussion?
Hello. Through Mayor Mora, I would just caution the council that any legal advice that we would have given not be disclosed publicly in open session. But I think Sharon could perhaps summarize the general rules that apply to business license taxes for the council's benefit.
Thank you, I'm city attorney. So several cities do use different rate structures, and we have our consultant on the line that can also speak to that. As long as there is a rational, plausible rational reason for having a distinction between the different tiers. For example, we noted that we modeled general retail at a lower rate, recognizing that that sector contributes to other taxes, taxes such as sales tax. Some approaches jurisdictions use is that they may have a lower rate based on gross receipts in order to support smaller businesses or businesses that are just getting started. The cap is actually considered another distinction because a cap puts in place a different rate that once you've reached a certain amount, then you no longer have to contribute more. So again, there are ways to model this. It's allowable. Other jurisdictions do it, and again, it's just about describing the rationale and being clear on what the rate structure is as it goes to the voters. I'll see if our consultant, Eric Myers, would also like to opine.
Thank you. I think you've covered it quite well. The basic concept here is that you can make rational distinctions to help drive some of the revenue results that are needed. And in the models that have been presented, for example, some of those rational distinctions are looking at things like, are they contributing to the tax base elsewhere? Generally speaking, for example, the difference between a professional service and a service, it's just more palatable to have a tax that recognizes that services may be personal services, and to recognize that professionals, for example, are doctors and lawyers who may be very productive per headcount and are not usually contributing to the tax base within the city in some other way. So you're trying to adjust for both the revenue and the differential impact.
Any other clarifying questions? Member Pryforce?
Yeah, so my hesitation is, well, so the term unfair, after hearing the consultant's response, now takes on two dimensions, which is that, that whether or not we are increasing our legal risk with, sort of with each category, you know, the further right we go on the spreadsheet, the more money we can potentially collect, but is it also, you know, the possibility that we're increasing our legal risk and exposure? And if that's the case, then, then we could end up losing or just not receiving some of the funds. It'll just get tied up, you know, through the legal process. And so I am concerned about that, and that as long as we're aware and we're measuring that, incorporating that into how we're looking at these models. And so, so there's that. And then also, the whole thing about, you know, sort of doctors, lawyers, professionals, and I want to make sure that, that we are looking at the bigger folks here, and that this doesn't penalize as much as possible the smaller folks, those who are just opening up a business. And as well as, I'm also looking at not just small businesses, but also nonprofits that sometimes fall under some of these, these tax considerations. And so I, so I just want to make sure that we're looking at this as fairly as possible, as measured as possible, that I am for, of course, I've been pushing this since the very beginning, that addressing this business tax cap. At the same time, I just want to make sure that we are going back, that we are going after some of the big players, less so the small players, and understanding the impact if it does fall on some of the smaller players, as well as making sure that the big players don't tie us up in court shenanigans as a result of this because we have, because we push towards the right of the spreadsheet for more, for more revenue as opposed to something that may be a little bit more modest. And so that's, so those are my concerns. And I think the only clarifying question I have is the commercial landlord. Could you make it clear to our view, we say our viewers, our audience, what is, how is commercial landlord defined? Because when there is a theft that happens at a residence, that is, let's say, a multifamily rental unit, that is considered a commercial theft. And so... And so, could you help us understand a little bit more? Is, is the commercial landlord just about sort of business, for business use spaces? Or is it, does it also include sort of multifamily units and thus residences? And that commercial landlord is an umbrella for both?
Councilmember Pryforce, for the business license category, commercial landlord or commercial property purely is commercial. Anything that is considered residential, be it the multifamily duplex, et cetera, because the primary purpose is residential use, that is in the residential category. You're welcome.
Members, any other questions? Member Solomon?
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. Just a clarifying technical question. So all of the modeling, and maybe this is for HDL, all of the modeling that was done for this, this presentation assumes, assumes the same number and size of businesses across all of the different options that are being presented, variations being presented. And the implication being that us raising or lowering business licenses doesn't have an impact on which businesses decide to open here and their level of success or their level of revenue?
That's correct, Councilmember Solomon. The business model does use the 3,190 current businesses. However, and I'll have HDL speak to this, the model does assume a discount factor, knowing that there is going to be some changes in the business climate. And they are able to model that and factor it in so that, you know, we are trying to model reality a little bit. But I'll let Eric speak to that a little bit. In particular, what they have also noticed, whether or not businesses choose to relocate based on rates changing. Eric, if you would mind talking about that, please?
Absolutely. So yes, as already pointed out, the model is based on a specific sort of current status quo. We do build in about a 10% uncertainty discount to account for things like some unexpected churn at a certain level and/or just the economy, which I think most of us would say is somewhat uncertain at this point in time. So it includes a little bit of concession for that. Generally speaking, historically in California, we have not seen a lot of businesses move at the margins because of a business license tax. Again, these are, we're talking about fractions of a penny on the dollar. Now, that doesn't mean that what has been true historically will continue to be true with the overall tax burdens in the state of California. So it's wise to be cautious and considerate, but we do not specifically model sort of a substitution effect because generally it just hasn't happened in our experience that you've had, you know, significant amounts of response to these kinds of changes at the margin.
Any other clarifying questions? I actually had one. Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so thank you, Sharon, for the presentation. I think this is something new that we are seeing the HDL. I don't remember seeing this in the budget and governance, the presentation by HDL, or was it there?
Vice Mayor Carr, it was part of the presentation.
Okay. This, the variable grocery receipts model actually definitely, there's a big discrepancy in the, I mean, an optimistic amount there and a more, I guess, something that is more appealing in terms of the revenue generation in the variable grocery receipts rate model. Have there been any discussions on how to mitigate the cons there? Or are there any ways that can be considered in mitigating the cons? I mean, is it something HDL can answer?
Well, I see if Eric can answer that one. And just to make sure I understand your, your question, it's how do you potentially mitigate the disadvantages of using a variable rate model where different business sectors pay a different tier or a different amount per grocery seat?
That is correct.
Eric, are you able to respond to that question?
Sure, sure. A couple of ways that you could do it. The first would be you make the spread, the difference between the, the categories tighter, right? That tends to mitigate that impact somewhat. Depending on what impact you're looking to mitigate, that, that may make a difference in terms of perceived fairness. It will also impact revenue, however, that's, that's sort of the trade off. You can have tighter groupings of the rates, but it's going to impact the revenue in the model. Another option would be to further simplify the groupings and, you know, for example, you group services and professionals together. Again, entirely doable, but it is going to flatten your revenue anticipation when you do something like that.
Appreciate the response, Eric. Thank you. Thanks, Sharon.
You're welcome. Another question? Go ahead. Member Pryforce?
So this, this came to me. So I apologize if it's, it's a bit silly to consider, but, and maybe you, our ghost voice would be able to help us answer. Is it possible that, as another way to mitigate those cons, that we, that if we decide on, on the variable model, that we have sort of a, a citizen advisory committee sort of determine some of those pros and cons of each, each industry? And then therefore, any pushback that we make is from businesses, we can say, well, this was sort of democratically reviewed. So then it, yeah, it, it, so I think that, that having, having sort of the public chime in a little more on, on how we decide which industries. And, and of course, we provide as much information as possible as to why we should do that, you know, provide a staff report as to, hey, you know, this, this is the reason why we should do this or that. But I think that having sort of a citizens advisory committee review this and say, hey, this is, this is what we think, that that may, that it feels just a little bit more sort of democratic and that this is what the people of Emeryville want. I mean, that's something that this came to mind. I don't know if that's ever been done before because I'm sort of, it may be apple oranges because I'm looking at, not necessarily with taxation, but other times when there could have been significant legal blowback against the city and a citizen advisory sort of created that buffer where, where, where if a, a, a business or, or any entity had any issue, then they would have to sort of make their case to that advisory committee. And that could be the budget advisory committee. But definitely something that can act as a buffer as opposed to us just saying, hey, this is the, these are the, the industries that we think are going to be taxed differently. Even, even with those tight margins, that level of unfairness is something that met public scrutiny. And, and this is what will determine. Other than that, I think that looking at what our values are as a city, you know, if a, if a business had a significant carbon footprint or that sort of thing are also ways of being able to determine which industries are charged what. And, and perhaps that would be a way to mitigate some of those cons. So that's just, is that something that has ever been explored before or something that could be considered?
So just to clarify, the question is, can a committee be involved in the process?
Mayor Mora, Councilmember Pryforce, if we receive direction from, preliminary direction from council tonight and, you know, come back to codify moving forward with any of these options, and we'll talk about this later in the presentation, we would recommend then that there's some community outreach and engagement. We would likely continue to work with, with budget advisory committee, budget and governance, or EDAC committee, engage in outreach to the business community and also do some community surveying. So I think that option could be considered down the road as a potential strategy. I'm not quite aware whether or not it has been used. Brian might have some knowledge or Eric with HDL. But again, I think those are options that could be explored as we move further down this road.
Let me comment on the council's questions, Councilmember Pryforce and the others. First of all, the brackets that you're seeing in the variable rate are very typical of cities that have modernized their business license taxes. What has happened over the years is there was a period where city councils could establish the rates and the categories by a vote. They didn't have to go to voters. And as a result of that, business license ordinances like the one you have ended up with a lot of categories and a lot of rates. Once that stopped, what happened is when cities went forward to change the rates, that's also the point at which they looked at the number of categories and also the rates. In terms of the two options that you're looking at, particularly the variable one, that is the model that most cities that are either creating new business license tax ordinances or updating use. And there are a couple of factors they use. As Sharon indicated, one of them is, are some of the businesses currently paying taxes to the city? Do they pay sales tax? Do they pay hotel tax, et cetera? And that's the reason that typically restaurants and grocery stores, for example, are shown in that number one category. You'll also notice that in the flat rate, one of the things that we asked HDL to model was actually reducing the rate for the grocery stores and restaurants from 1% to 0.75, again, taking that into account. Now, most cities take the position or the view that because you're using gross receipts, by definition, the smaller businesses, the less profitable ones are paying less in tax and the bigger ones are paying more because it is the case. Another thing to consider, not that you're looking at it here per se, but in the table where you're looking at other cities that use a per employee system, one of the downsides of that model is some of your less profitable businesses are the ones that have a tighter margin. They're the ones that tend to have more employees, like a grocery store, like a warehouse, hotel, et cetera. So there is a bit of a concern about them being regressive taxes if you're using the per employee system versus the gross receipt system. But also to add to the discussion about variable rate categories, the ones you're seeing here are very, very common. I would be very surprised that you had any legal exposure or risk using those because again, pretty typical. In fact, there is a, what they call an IRS profitability index that many cities like San Leandro in the past have used to land on the sort of rate categories that you're seeing here. But again, as Sharon indicated, this is all something that is subject to discussion as you move forward with your outreach efforts with the community, with your polling, with talking to the business community, they can always be tweaked. So you certainly have a lot of flexibility here.
Thank you, Brian and Sharon. We have another question from Member Welch.
Oh, no, I just had a more clarifying comment that because this is a study session, this is just the preliminary part. There's tons of community engagement that go into anywhere before a ballot or ballot measure gets put on for, put forth for the voters to vote on. So there's tons of polling that's done. There's a lot that goes into the language. There's a lot that goes into the design of the, of any potential revenue measures we would be considering. So this is just the very, very early phases of that.
Thanks for that clarification. I think what's being highlighted is that what we're looking at is a starting point, right? And you're looking for high level direction from council in which, which measures, which options to pursue. I did have a clarifying question. You mentioned at the, towards the start of the presentation that compliance audits yielded an additional $1 million. And I was looking, we had our, so our current rate, we had 6.5 million in business license tax. So a million dollars is a significant chunk of that, 15%. This compliance effort that was undertaken, how many entities were audited as part of that? Or like what, how much progress have we made through that effort? And do we think that the compliance aspect that's moving in parallel with the exploring these different rates? I imagine we're not looking at 100% compliance as reflected in some of the numbers that we're seeing. So I'd like to get a better sense from where we are in the audit compliance efforts because that could definitely come into play in terms of the total expected revenues as we get higher compliance. So another way of phrasing it is that $1 million, is that just the start of our efforts? Or is that, does that represent a concluding number?
Mayor Mora, I'll have Eric speak to some of the compliance efforts built into the model. There is an assumption, I believe it's assuming about 12,000 or so. And again, knowing that if we are successful in compliance efforts, businesses then would be in compliance, right? And so we went and continue to maybe generate the delinquent payments, per se. And again, under the scenarios, we're looking at a different structure. I'm not sure if Eric has the number of businesses because that is HDL, but a different counterpart. So we may need to look up the number and get back to that, get back to you on that specifics. But I'll see if Eric can speak more generally about compliance efforts and how it factors into the modeling.
Yes, so in terms of the modeling, anybody who was already sort of known to our compliance department who has made some form of payment is built into the model. And as you just heard, the estimated revenue to the city from those accounts that are still in the compliance classification is only about 12,000. What that indicates, though I don't have definitive numbers on the, you know, maturity of the audit process at the moment, but what that indicates is that that $1 million has already brought into compliance a non-trivial number. Typically, the way that the audits work, you're looking, you're looking to continue auditing over a period of time where there's no reason to audit. You're also looking to discover businesses that have not necessarily registered and that's really very difficult to try to forecast in any reliable way. You're essentially saying, well, how much, one would essentially be guessing, how many businesses may not be registered right now and that have never registered? And then there's collections, which is ongoing in the city. And generally, we see cities throughout California at about an 85 to 90% compliance rate in terms of having actually filed on time or gotten their filings in. So I'm not sure if that answers the question entirely, but we could, at staff's direction, if they'd like, get more specific numbers on the audit program as far as its impact in the model, to the extent that they're already known and they've made any payment whatsoever, they're built in. they're built in, and their estimate's about $12,000.
That's helpful background. I think that sounds like the takeaway is that the, the compliance effort, I guess we would need to know how much progress has been made in that to understand how that might impact the model. So for example, if that $1 million, which represents 15% of our total collected amount, if that, if that represents, you know, the early days or having only looked at 10% or 15% of companies, then, you know, there's some assumptions about what else is out there in terms of, and all those, you mentioned a number of examples, you know, businesses that may not be registered, whether they're paying, paying the correct amount. I think there's different aspects to that audit and compliance effort. So I think that would be helpful information to collect as if we choose to move, I guess in any event, but definitely if we're choosing to, if we end up providing direction on this specific item to move in that direction, it would be helpful to know, so we can get some more meaningful numbers. Any other clarifying questions? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I think about compliance, I actually, I'm thinking about our co-compliance officer that when we saw that the city really needed to deal with a lot of building coding issues, complaints that people were having, we added someone to our team. The compliance sort of budget that we need to account for with other cities, did they have a dedicated person to deal with compliance? Or did they, was it all sort of consulted out? And does that affect that, that amount, the, I guess, that $1 million budget?
Councilmember Pryforce, I believe it varies. Quite a few cities that use HDL, like we do for, in this during our business license tax. Also, we have a contract for their compliance and discovery audits as well. Also, that is typical. Larger jurisdictions, I do know sometimes how their finance department do audits as well. But again, it's useful to have that third party helping to provide the auditing service as well. So, you know, again, depends on your, you know, your resources and the level of, I guess, how large your business tax is compared to your general fund. You know, if you're a city that your general fund is, your business tax is $20 million of a, say, $250 million budget, you may have a finance person working on compliance efforts. Other smaller jurisdictions find it much more efficient to have experts like HDL work in tandem, you know, with city staff on compliance efforts. Eric, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Sure, I can say we've got about 80 cities in the state of California where we're doing compliance. Compliance is a tricky word, and so I'll try to make just a quick distinction, right? The first is, there's a lot of, of business license compliance officers are often actually going out and looking at regulatory compliance, right? Are things up to code? Is the fire regulations being met, et cetera? And then, so it's not as common to have a dedicated personnel inside the city doing the sort of business license side of it, the tax side of it. It does happen, but as I said, we have about 80 clients where they've outsourced that, if you will, hired us to help with our expertise in, in doing, finding businesses, talking to them, auditing, helping them get into compliance with their tax side, so.
Just to add to what Sharon and Eric said, I think that in general terms, if it's a larger city, as Sharon indicated, they might have someone in the finance department doing the audit. But in a smaller city like Emeryville, typically you would hire someone like HDL to do it. Just so you know, HDL has a contingency factor, so they get a percentage of what is found if they do find it. So that's part of their incentive. And also, you should know that the way it works with HDL is if they have businesses that they believe are not licensed in your community or not paying the appropriate amount, they will send a list of those businesses confidentially to the finance director, who will then refer it to the city manager. And if both of them agree that it can be audited, the audit moves forward. If they don't agree, it doesn't. There's one other variable too in all of this, which doesn't affect your city, but does affect some cities. And that is that in some of the cities that have really old ordinances, and particularly those that either have a flat rate or headcount, sometimes the amount charged for a business license is so small, you can't make the audit pencil out. So I've seen situations where someone like HDL or one of the competitive companies will wait until the city actually updates their business license ordinance before they even will be willing to do audits, because you have a gross receipts system that's not applicable here. But again, those are some of the factors.
Thank you, Brian and Sharon. I know we have another meeting starting in a few minutes, so I do want to make some more progress on this presentation. If there's no other member questions, or if the members are comfortable discussing some of these, some of their questions later with staff, as we learn this, this item, this is really just an initial starting point. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for additional questions. So maybe we can proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. The second option is a parcel tax. Again, your typical property tax that we receive, secured property, is based on assessed value. However, a parcel tax is not value-based or non-ad valorem. It can be imposed as a flat rate per parcel, per building square footage, or on land use. And again, it's important to note that the parcel tax does require a two-thirds vote or approval. Next slide, please. Here's just a snapshot of other local measures related to parcel taxes that have been put on the ballot and passed in the area. And Oakland is also considering looking at new parcel tax rates potentially for the June ballot. Next slide. The first option A is the flat tax per parcel. This assumes that every taxable parcel pays the same amount. You can see on the chart what that looks like in terms of generating revenue. $721 per parcel to generate $3.5 million annually, all the way up to a little over $1,000 to generate $5 million. And then you can note the breakdown of your taxable parcels by residential and non-residential and vacant. Next slide. Second option, a flat rate as well, but this time on a per building square footage model. You can see under this model, to generate $3.5 million in revenue, equates to about 19 cents per building square feet. And that would increase up to 26 cents per building square feet to generate $5 million. Again, you can see the breakdown between the residential and non-residential under this model. Next slide. And option C is by land use. This is a blend where the residential pays per unit, and then the non-residential or commercial pays per building square footage. You can see on the chart, for a residential parcel, this would equate to $50 for a single-family home or condo, $983 for a multifamily residential. And then the non-residential average tax would be a little over $4,000, again, to generate $3.5 million roughly. Next slide. Parcel tax, again, a ballot measure can also include an inflationary adjustment to the initial rate. We have modeled here what a 2% or 3% annual increase would look like if your initial starting point was revenue of $3.5 million or $4 million. You can see fairly incremental. And of course, you know, typically your parcel count or your building square feet in your footprint typically don't grow compared to some other revenue sources. However, it is also much more stable compared to other revenue. Next slide. Okay, that was parcel tax in a nutshell. Can either entertain questions or keep moving forward as you prefer?
Let's keep moving forward, then we can take questions on the rest of the measures together.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Third option, transaction and use tax. This would be additional tax levied on top of the existing state and local sales tax. It would be based on the point of receipt or the point of use of goods and services in Emeryville. It would assume all residents, businesses, and visitors to Emeryville would pay this. It's very similar to Measure F, which was approved by the voters in 2020. Modeling the revenue we receive from Measure F, if we increased our sales tax by another quarter cent, we anticipate we could receive another $2 to $2.5 million annually. However, it would bring our sales tax rate in totality from 10.5% to 10.75%. And you can see on the chart how that compares to other cities in the region. It's also important to note that Senate Bill 63, which Senator Ehring spoke about to council, would create a public transit revenue district, and the voters of Almena County will consider voting for that in November of '26, and it would increase the sales tax if successful by another 0.5%. Next slide, please. Option four is the transient occupancy tax or hotel tax. It's currently 12% in Emeryville, and it's collected on guests who stay in our hotel or other lodging establishments. Again, the tax is based on the room rate that's being charged as well as occupancy. It is subject to consumer ability to travel and willingness to travel. This would be considered a pass-through to guests. However, as you can see on the chart, there is concern of potential competition regionally. You can see Oakland currently is 14%, although as the footnote indicates, in order to solve a $40 million deficit, Oakland is contemplating whether or not an increase to 27% would be feasible. You can, again, see the rates in Berkeley and San Francisco, for example, and how that compares to Emeryville. Again, a 2% increase bringing us up to 14% would generate additional $900,000 roughly. Again, this is a general-purpose tax. Next slide. The final option is the utility user tax. It's currently a 5.5% tax on utility services. This revenue source is projected to increase even without an increase in our tax rate, just because our utility prices are projected to increase. You can see in the chart, other jurisdictions charge anywhere from 1% to 10% on this. Oakland is also looking at potentially increasing the rate from 7.5% to 11.8%. That 2% additional increase bringing us from 5.5% to 7.5% would generate about $1.6 million. Adding video service, which is currently not in our ordinance, would generate about $350,000 annually. And again, general-purpose tax, and the voters would have to improve both a rate increase if so desired by council to move in that direction. And if council would like to add video service, that also would need to go to the voters. Next slide, please. Again, a summary of the options. Again, all of these options would require a simple majority of the voters, with the exception of the parcel tax. We have the estimated revenue. We've noted sort of the economic volatility associated with some of these measures, and then the ease of administration from the staff perspective. Most of these are fairly straightforward to administer as well. Next slide. The Budget Advisory Committee did meet in September and supported the business license modernization, the option B of the variable gross receipts. They also supported the parcel tax by land use with the caveat of the residential parcel rate staying at $100. They also recommended that if council would move forward in this option to include an income-based exemption such as modeled like the PG&E CARES program. There is conditional support of increasing the TOT, but definitely consideration for the impact on the hotel industry. And again, as noted on that slide, the competition. They were not supportive of increases in the transient and use tax or the utility tax. Next slide. Budget and Governance Committee met around the same timeframe and had similar recommendations as the Budget Advisory Committee. Again, the support of the variable gross receipts, support of the parcel tax with a flat rate of $75 to $100 per residential parcel. Again, conditional support of hotel tax increase, and not recommending increases in the TUT or UUT, again, being more sensitive to the economic impacts that might have on the community. Next slide. Again, this just depicts the recommendations from the two committees. Next slide. And also, the recommendation, we did work with our consultant, MBS, to model what $5 million of revenue would look like, assuming the residential rate stays at $100. We built in a buffer to model residential exemptions, and the corresponding increase to the non-residential would be 37 cents per square feet. Next slide. Again, as you look through this initial step, and all these revenue options, here are some other factors that you may wish to consider. Next slide. Again, as we started this presentation, the reason for this study session is to address our projected general fund deficit. We've done a hypothetical forecast, again, based on our projected deficit, and then the impact of all the various revenue options. You can see that in totality, if all these revenue options were put on the ballot and passed by the voters, in totality, they would address the projected deficit. Again, noting, most of these measures, if successful, would come into play in January of '27. A sales tax would come online in April of '27, so we've modeled the impact for '26, '27, and the out years. That, I believe is the last slide, but I'll have, I believe, next, as we talked about, we're seeking preliminary direction. If, based on council direction and moving forward, we would engage in that community outreach and surveying, come back to council in the spring and early summer with drafting the ballot measure, the corresponding ordinances to make sure everything is in place with the county by August in order to meet the ballot deadline of November 3, 2026. I appreciate your attention and your questions, and happy to entertain any other questions or direction you may provide. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Sharon. Members, any follow-up questions related to options two through five before we open up public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to now invite any members of the public who would like to comment on special, on the study session revenue measures for 2026. You can come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes. Seeing none, I'll now bring it back to the council for discussion and provide Seeing none, I'll now bring it back to the council for discussion and provide direction to staff on which budget measures to pursue for a 2026 ballot. Members, any thoughts? Member Pryforce.
So I just, I just want to thank the Budget and Advisory Committee for saying no, not just to the utility tax, but to the sales tax in terms of it not being recommended. Particularly the utility tax, I had an issue with. I mean, I had a whole speech prepared, and now I'm kind of disappointed that I don't get to use it. The utility tax, I believe, which is what is squeezed already, those who are on the margins when it comes to PG&E hikes, yeah, I'm naming PG&E, and anything that passed the, any cost onto the, to the consumer, especially those who are struggling and will and probably continue to struggle through this economy, that it would have been a bad idea for us to move forward on that. And so, so I just want to say thank you to the Budget Advisory Committee for not recommending that. If it does somehow come back, I will continue to, to fight that. So, yeah, so, so those are all my comments.
Member Welch.
And I didn't know if Madam Vice Mayor wanted to chime in, but just thank you, Member Pryforce. We echo those sentiments as far as the concerns around individuals with lower incomes and dealing with the issues around PG&E, inflation still being very extremely high, and now ongoing issues with the government shutdown. There is concerns that we did not want to add any burden to our residents or individuals that come here to shop in the city of Emeryville with any additional type of sales tax or the utility tax. My comments remain the same from our previous Budget and Advisory Committee meeting. I think parcel taxes have been proven to be more stable, but then also exploring the business license tax since it has been a good 40-ish years since there's been a change. And I think four decades is a good enough time to maybe have a modest increase, but still noting the concerns about maybe that not being the main source of a major revenue change because it is still very much a variable. Business license tax can change depending on, obviously, the number of businesses, but if we're going off of gross receipts, as we're still kind of dealing with some ebbs and flows economically in the Bay Area and the nation at large, not wanting to lean too much on that heavily. But I think our, our two best bets to address our structural deficit, we're looking at definitely just the business license tax and also the parcel tax. And that was what I had stated earlier in our Budget and Governance Committee.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Solomon had his hand up before I did, so I can defer to him before I make my comment.
Member Solomon?
Thank you. And thank you, Sharon and Brian and HDL for the presentation and a lot of information and very helpful to have it laid out like that. So, yeah, I also haven't had a chance to, to opine on this yet from the die, so I agree with the, the recommendations from the Budget Advisory Committee and the Budget and Governance Council Committee. I think, you know, the, to me, the sales tax and hotel tax options are, would have an impact on our regional viability of regional competitiveness. And I think that's something that, you know, the, the business license and the parcel tax wouldn't, from, from what we can tell, wouldn't have that same impact. Agree with the sentiment on the utility user tax as not being the most efficient or, you know, sort of reading the, the tea leaves from the, the sort of current state of the world, not, not something that I think people would be amenable to. One, so I, and I think the option, the variable gross receipts and the, the sort of mixed land use, parcel tax by land use kind of makes sense as incorporating some sense of equity and reflecting that different companies have different profitability, contribute different amounts to our economy, different parcels similarly have different sort of productive uses. So I think that I, I would also agree with moving forward with those two primarily. One thing I just want to note, and I know that this revenue measure doesn't have to solve all of our budget deficit challenge, but, you know, the budget, the budget deficit is 8 to 13 million, and these are, I think the maximum I wrote down was 6.5 million. So just mindful that, you know, we may need to do one of these, two of these, you know, do one and then revisit in a couple of years, and we don't have to decide that right now. But I think just want to be cognizant that these are, these are big numbers we're looking at, and I think the way out of this is, to me, going to be unlikely to raise taxes all the way to, you know, to, to cover that deficit. I think we are all fingers crossed that the economy improves and sales tax goes up, current business licenses go up, you know, there's, there's property transfer tax. But just want to, just want to recognize that because I think that, you know, these are all good individually, but especially as we're thinking about how we communicate it to the community, making sure that we're clear about what portion of the challenge this is going to solve. And if it's not 100%, that's acceptable, but being cognizant that we may need to revisit some of these options again in the future.
Thank you, Member Solomon. It sounds like most of the council is supportive of the Budget and Governance Committee recommendations. I'm supportive as well, and I also like in particular about the business license tax modernization is that it is a modernization. Some businesses will pay the same, some businesses may pay less, some businesses may pay more. Overall, we are looking at a net increase, and I think it'll be, just as a good watch out for that, as our peer cities, geographic peer cities are also looking to modernize their business license taxes. I think it's important to keep a close eye on Oakland, Berkeley, San Francisco. These are often some of the competitive, geographic competing areas that some of these businesses may want to incorporate. So with that being said, staff, do we have, do you have sufficient direction to proceed? Oh, one more comment. Member Pryforce, go ahead.
So I, I hear my colleagues, and I agree, looking at other cities, seeing what they're doing, but what other cities are doing is they, they have a very, very sexy tax that I have been pushing for, which is called a vacancy tax, that all of these empty buildings that exist in Emeryville, that those who are keeping them empty, waiting for an occupant, or all of the residences that are empty. And that I know that we've heard that it is not in the best interest of the landlord to keep them empty. I would disagree that some of them are being kept empty, that, that going into also the, I believe it's the transient occupancy tax, that I, I would like to know how Airbnb plays a factor with the transient occupancy tax, because I would like to see Airbnbs charged more than our, our struggling hotel industry. But there has been revenue generated with a vacancy tax in cities like Berkeley, and I push, and I'm, and I'm pushing it, and so if we're making room for taxes, that is a tax that I would love for us to consider.
Maybe just one comment to add regarding a vacancy tax. I don't like to see any vacant businesses or residences any more than anyone else, but I think the main intention of those taxes like that are to incentivize the occupancy and to not have vacant buildings. And it's not primarily a revenue generating tax. So I think for the purpose of this discussion, at least looking at the most promising revenue generating taxes, I think I'm, I think it's accurate to say that at least we all support the, the variable rate business modernization and the parcel tax. Member Pryforce.
So unfortunately, Mayor, I do want to highlight that the city of Berkeley, when they passed their vacancy tax, they also thought they weren't going to get a lot of money with the vacancy tax. It was more so to incentivize filling those empty spaces, but in actuality, they found out that they actually did collect a fair amount, and that's a discussion that, that we can have offline, and I can share you some of the news reports and some of the reports coming from the city of Berkeley where, and they did generate revenue, significant revenue, actually. I mean, I don't know, it might be apples and oranges to, to Emeryville, but, but they did generate more than they thought they would with a vacancy tax.
Perhaps that's something we can look at at a later time. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to extend my thanks to Sharon, Brian, and Eric. Thank you so much for doing this. Now that I've viewed this a second time, I again agree with the comments made by the Chair of the Budget and Governance Committee, Member Welch, and again, stand by my comments noted here in the staff report. Would like to proceed with what the council has now agreed upon, and I will defer to the mayor for further comments.
Thank you, Sharon and Brian. So have you received all the direction that you need today?
We have, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the input from the council.
Thank you. That concludes this meeting. The time is 7:37, and this meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:38. This is a special, or this is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that all members are still seated from the previous meeting. Now is the time to approve the final agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now is the time for ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items on the agenda, you can come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Welcome. Member Pryforce.
And this is for the regular meeting or not the successor?
This is for the successor agency.
Okay, so then we're going to adjourn and then have a regular meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would just recommend that those who would like their comments heard, wait until we're done with this, and then the regular meeting.
You're also free to comment now. Proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Empress, a lifelong Emeryville native, a proud alum of Annie Yates and Emeryville Child Development Center, with summers spent at the Emeryville Pool. I hold a BFA from Pace University and a master's from NYU, bringing that same creativity and discipline into my work as an artist and baker and community mentor. Today, I am the owner of Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. at the Emery, a creative, community-driven space where I sell prepackaged cookies that are all produced in a licensed commercial kitchen in San Francisco, as well as art and retail gifts produced by Bay Area locals. It is not a restaurant. It is a small local business built with love, integrity, and deep respect for the community I serve. Recently, false statements were made about me, claiming I run a restaurant and host parties. That is simply untrue. The photo used to support those claims was actually taken at the city's own Harvest Festival, a public celebration meant to bring us together. As someone who has grown up in Emeryville and now operates a local business, I believe deeply in its vision of being a vibrant, sustainable, and healthy community for all. As a longtime resident and entrepreneur, I want to contribute to that vision for all generations. I am asking for partnership, for the opportunity to share my story, clear the record, and work with the city to ensure that creative, ethical small businesses can thrive without fear or misrepresentation. Thank you for listening and for your service and for giving me the space to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment? You can come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Clearly, there's a height requirement for this podium. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Charles Orlando. I'm a resident of Emeryville, and I reside in the building directly next door to Chocolate Mama Cooking Company. There are over 33 million small businesses in the United States, which constitute over 90% of all US businesses, employing nearly half the private workforce. California has over 4.2 small businesses, 4.2 million small businesses, representing upwards of 95% of all companies in the state, employing more than 7 million workers. Chocolate Mama Cooking Cafe is one of those economically critical businesses. These same California small businesses create a community through local engagement, through economic support, and by providing spaces for connection that create and foster a welcoming, personalized atmosphere that go beyond typical commercial interactions. In the short time the cafe has been there, the cafe and its owners and staff have provided all this and much more. They are not only representative of a destination of diversity, but also embody the first business within the Hubbard Street area that not only provide a service but also connection, a connection that in my humble opinion is vitally needed, not only in this area, but also during this time of global disconnection and uncertainty. Further, the outdoor seating area has been a pleasure for me and my family personally, but I would strongly emphasize that it is not an aesthetic upgrade. It's an investment in community life and local economic resilience. Perhaps most importantly, it aligns with Emeryville's own general plan, when it calls for, and I'm paraphrasing slightly here, vibrant, walkable neighborhoods where residents can live, work, and gather in shared spaces. This cafe directly fulfills that goal. It's located in a live-work zone designed to encourage small businesses, creative enterprises, and local gathering spots that knit together residential and commercial life.
Thank you for your comment. Are there, are there any other members of the public? Welcome, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and the council member. I'm the father of Empress. Empress was raised and groomed in Emeryville here. When we have Sharwin Williams, when there are a lot of companies here spewing out more smoke in the city of Emeryville. Emeryville has come a long way. They have turned it around. They are now a community of vibrant businesses, small businesses. I'm appealing to the mayor and the council member to look deeply into the allegations brought against Empress Cook Chocolate Mama Coffee. And now we are appealed solidly and stand behind Empress Chocolate Coffee, that is a vibrant community enterprise that brings people together. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Greetings. My name is Tracy Bell-Borden, and I am the owner of Exotic Links and Body Essentials. I am located at, at Empress's location, 4310 Hubbard. I myself and my grandson, who is 18 months old, has a business there, Leo's Tribe, has clothing, stuff that is brought in for the community. We appreciate the ability to be in this place. This is sacred land. I am a native in my 50s, and this has been, this is sacred land, that's all I can say. And as an Afro-Indigenous woman, a artist, a community member, an activist in this community, I chose to be here with Empress because I know exactly what it is that this community has been asking for. I know what it needs, and we just felt like this was the perfect place to be in. I do have to say that because of the accusations, I have been there recently in midst of some of the problems, and we have had police called. I was there at an incident when we had three officers, three guns, and three tasers brought to an event where we were doing nothing but other than existing on land that is sacred. brought to an event where we were doing nothing but other than existing on land that is sacred. We do have to remember this is Olone land and we are giving what it is that the community is asking for. And all we are is existing, bringing business to the city of Emeryville because most of us have been here, we have lived here, and we have existed here. And all we want to do is exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Good evening. This is both a professional and a private matter that brings me here tonight. I've known Empress over 20 years now. And in the time that I've known her, we were a group of entrepreneurs, hairstylists, makeup artists, bakers, actors, all these things. I am a resident of the Emory. I've been at the Emory since they opened up and started leasing apartments. And I was so happy that Empress and her sister and another barber friend of mine, they all do the, they all occupy the live-work spaces. And that's amazing because 20 years ago, we didn't know that this is where we would be. We're in happy places, happy space professionally and personally. And it's kind of offensive and rude that the parties that are complaining about this, it really has no merit, it has no weight. And if I could add one piece of information or detail, they were very, very hostile towards what the lady just said before me. She said, "We were just simply existing." And they called the police and they're very rude and they play loud music and they're hostile. And if you can say passive, they're aggressive, but they were just aggressive. It was rude. And I just hope that this can just go away and dissolve and let her business and our entrepreneurship exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, my name is Ashley Williams, the owner and head roaster of Aftermath Coffee and the co-head roaster of Red Bay Coffee, one of the few Black women that is roasting in the Bay Area. I just wanted to say, as a frequent collaborator with Chocolate Mama Cookie, this space isn't just about the cookies. It's about community, creativity, and connection. It serves as a hub for our neighbors and for our young entrepreneurs. We're all parents, so bringing our children here to see us grow this business and build this legacy is very important to us in building the future, which is a main catchphrase of Chocolate Mama is welcome to the future. Some talk, some of the people who have made accusations have talked about protecting artists. But real inclusion is welcoming every kind of artist and giving space to all voices to thrive. We invite everyone to visit, experience the space, feel what we're building because real community isn't built by closing doors, it's built by opening hearts and pulling more chairs to the table. So please come down to Chocolate Mama Cookie, all of you. And just so you know, we've also, we're able to obtain 100 signatures from residents who are saying that they love what we're doing and that they're happy that it's here. And we're welcome to share that with you if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Latrice McNeely. I'm a neuromuscular therapist, medical massage clinician, and my art is healing. I also operate this space at Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. And I'm here today because of false claims that have been made about our space that threaten our ability to work, serve the community, and remain housed. To be clear, Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. is not a restaurant. We do not operate a kitchen. She sells prepackaged vegan baked goods, Lee serves coffee. As you heard, our other sister friend owns a retail, retail company that she uses the space for. And Empress is a culinary artist with her vegan cookies. Unfortunately, like I said, there are false claims made. And all we are are Black women-led, artist-led, and community care-led in everything we do. Unfortunately, there are some people with social and professional privilege that have submitted misleading and exaggerated complaints, excuse me, in an effort to push us out. These claims are not rooted in any type of documented harm or safety concern. They reflect bias and exclusion, particularly toward Black women culturally present to share a creative space. We are good neighbors. We operate legally, respectfully, and transparently. We contribute to the well-being, identity, and cultural vibrancy of Emeryville. I'm just asking the council to ensure that decisions are based on facts and not personal discomfort and that Black women-led businesses are not displaced through targeted complaints. We are here to build community, not disrupt it. We are here to heal, create, and support resilience in this city. We are simply asking for the right to continue existing and contributing to the shared cultural life of the Emory and the city of Emeryville. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Mel McNeely. I'm here today to speak in strong support of Chocolate Mama Cookie Company, an American-owned business that has become an invaluable part of the Emeryville community. Cafe is a space of culture and joy. It's exactly the kind of local businesses we should be nurturing and protecting. Recently, a complaint was filed against the cafe centered on, amongst other things, music being played during normal business hours. The situation escalated when the neighbors took the step of calling the police. The irony here is I have video evidence showing those same neighbors playing loud music themselves, directly in response to the cafe's music, further escalating the situation and undermining the very noise complaint that they lodged. This creates a troubling double standard. The actions of these neighbors not only make the complaint feel retaliatory, but also highlight a broader issue. When businesses are treated as disturbances for simply existing in their own space, it's a form of cultural erasure. In addition, it doesn't feel good that photos are being taken of patrons in the cafe without the consent. Our community is formally asserting our reasonable expectation of privacy and a right to know the use of attentive any images taken. And how those videos and images are being used, this constitutes harassment. It's a familiar pattern of gentrification, where community and cultural expression are silenced in favor of a more homogeneous, quieter environment that pushes out diversity. Chocolate Mama Cookie Co., located at 4310 Hubbard, provides more than just a service. It's a vital community hub. I urge this council to recognize the importance of supporting businesses like this, businesses that bring life and color. The cafe deserves to be protected and not targeted. I ask that you stand with Kayende and her business and make it clear that Emeryville will not be tolerating any silence of culture or targeting our American-owned businesses. You can also support by coming yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional public comment, we will now move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The time is 7:54. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:16. This is a regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, I'd like to note that... Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Here.
Councilmember Welch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Here.
Thank you.
Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no special orders of the day. Are there any announcement of commission or committee vacancies?
I don't have any report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Next, we have council members' special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Members, anything to report?
I can...
Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. It, this is, well, sort of a meeting attendance. So happy to say that the tree planting occurred earlier in, at the end of October. And Councilmember Solomon was present along with the Public Works Department, some of whom are here. It was a very, as you may know, very looked-forward event by many in the community. So I am happy to say that went well and grateful to the staff for making it happen.
Glad to hear it. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
And now, ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Member Pryforce.
Just the emails that we all received about the noise ordinances.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. Next, we have public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? You can come to the podium and you'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Vicky Josual. I'm a 40-year citizen of Emeryville, and I serve on lots of committees. But one of my most important board that I'm on is ECAP, and that's Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. And now with SNAP payments stopping, we're kind of overwhelmed. We have a lot of food, thanks to Alameda County Food Bank and companies like Trader Joe's and Pack 'n Save and Target donating food to us. So we have plenty of food. We don't have enough volunteers to give out the food. I'm here to ask people to volunteer. We're at 26th, 27th and San Pablo, right there, by Riley's Auto Zone. And if you come on next week, November 11th, 12th, or 13th, I'll be there at 10 till noon, and I'll sign you in to volunteer and I'll train you. If you give us two hours, I'll fill up your grocery bags with wonderful vegetables. So come and volunteer with us, especially during the week. We're open six days a week, from 10 to 4. We have lots of wonderful help on Saturdays. We need more help during the week. So if you have a chance, come help us. Or if you know others who could help us, please do. Look at our website. You'll, I'm gonna leave some flyers outside. So any help during this time, thanks a lot, you guys.
Thank you, Vicky. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Tiara Wilson, and I've lived in Emeryville for 16 years. I moved into my apartment when I was just 20 years old, a young woman aging out of the system, proud to finally have a place to call home. I've worked hard all my adult life while living with a disability. I paid my rent, I paid my taxes, and I took pride in being part of this community. But this year, when I fell into a temporary hardship, everything I built was taken from me. Essex Property Trust changed my lives. My belongings and my cats were trapped inside. I reached out for help to my case managers, to anyone who would listen. But no one, especially Essex, ever told me that I could contact Echo Housing or the city of Emeryville for help. I was told there was nothing they could do and that they had no connections to emergency housing or assistance programs. I was buried under late fees, even charged for things I never used, like a parking spot when I don't even own a car. When I tried to make partial payments, they refused to accept them. Now I'm being offered help for storage units and for my cats, but not help to stay housed. I'm getting more support being removed than I ever got trying to stay. The city funds Echo Housing to protect tenants like me. But when landlords act the way Essex did, there is no enforcement power, no requirement for them to notify the city or Echo when they evict a long-term disabled tenant from affordable housing. I'm here because this shouldn't happen to anyone, not after 16 years of doing everything right. Please don't look at my case as an isolated incident.
Yes, one person can yield time. Go ahead, you have two more minutes.
Thank you. Please don't look at my case as an isolated incident. Look at it as a warning. People in Emeryville are struggling to survive. Many of the city's housing policies don't protect us, even those of us in so-called affordable housing. We pay the same taxes as everyone else, but without the same protections. I want to keep my home, I want to keep my neighbors. I shouldn't be invisible after 16 years of contributing to this city. More people will end up like me, and the only reason it's tolerated is because some believe it could never happen to them. We need stronger coordination, stronger enforcement, and a system that helps people before they lose everything. Thank you for listening and thank you, Emory Rising, for standing by me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Maya Scott Chung. I'm a disabled organizer, a parent, artist, elder, and public health educator, and was very moved to echo that this is sacred, occupied, and unseated Olone land. And I am a low-income, senior domestic violence survivor and disabled wheelchair user who fought very hard to be able to live here in Emeryville with a lot of housing discrimination, over 70 applications. Took me over two years to get housed. And I live here as the result of having, being a recipient of a federal emergency housing voucher that got cut by the federal government and did get help from both Echo Housing and Valerie Bernardo and folks at the city of Emeryville to finally get housed at the bridge at Emeryville, which is right across the street. And I'm really grateful to be here. I'm also a proud leader with Emory Rising, a grassroots network of tenants, single-family homeowners, churches, and other religious and community organizations, workers, and small business neighbors fighting for dignity, equity, and housing justice here in Emeryville. I'm here tonight to speak strongly in support of Ms. Wilson. She represents the heart of our community, people living at the intersections of disability, working-class people, gender, race, and others who have been historically marginalized by the state. Ms. Wilson's story of eviction and housing insecurity exposes how Emeryville's systems, from Echo Housing to corporate landlords like Essex Property Trust, have often failed many of us and to protect those of us who are in need. I recently heard and read on Facebook that a council member said that Emory Rising isn't a thing. And to me, that was really an attempt to erase the lived experience of the very people that this city is meant to serve. We are real, we are organizing, we are here...
Thank you for your comment.
...to support our neighbors and thank you so much.
Is there somebody who wants to yield their time? Do you need additional time?
If there's someone that can, I can say, but I also... Yeah.
You have somebody. Go ahead.
Well, cities like Berkeley have already passed tenants' right to organize ordinances, giving renters the power to stand together. Emeryville can and should do the same. We also support efforts to extend public comment accommodations for disabled residents like me, so everyone can fully participate in civic life. I have faced housing insecurity, and I know the courage that it takes to speak out when you feel unseen. But tonight, Ms. Wilson is not alone. She has all of us behind her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public? Yes. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Asha Tambi. I live on 67th and Hollis. I'm not sure if this is the correct time to comment on this, but there... Not 67th and Shellmount, I walk to past 67th and Hollis every day. I wanted to bring up the crosswalk timings are not adequate for pedestrians. I walk past it around 12 to 15 times a day, depending on what I do. I go back and forth through work and go to the gym through that intersection. I go back and forth through work and go to the gym through that intersection. I've been almost hit by a car almost every, every other day. I would just like a two- or three-second head start as a pedestrian. Also, on 67th and Shellmount, there is trash on the intersection, burnt mattress, burnt sofas, et cetera. And on 67th, it's street itself between Shellmount and Hollis, the construction that's going on there, I understand there's construction, but from time to time, there is a lot of vehicles that continuously block traffic. They don't have adequate places for pedestrians to walk, which causes safety hazards to me and others that I see. And there's usually broken glass, stuff like that. I don't think these constructions are keeping up, and it's kind of dangerous when there's cars passing by high speed.
Thank you for your comment.
Yep.
I'd like to note that members of the public can contact the city for Public Works issues. We have a contact page. And C Click Fix is a good resource. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Welcome, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Empress, a lifelong Emeryville native, a proud alum of Annie Yates and the Emeryville Child Development Center, with summers spent at the Emeryville Pool. I hold a BFA from Pace University and a master's from NYU, bringing that same creativity and discipline into my work as an artisan baker and a community mentor. Today, I am the owner of Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. at the Emery, a creative, community-driven space where I sell prepackaged cookies that are all produced in a licensed commercial kitchen in San Francisco, as well as art and retail gifts that are also produced by Bay Area locals. It is not a restaurant. It is a small local business built with love, integrity, and deep respect for the community I serve. Recently, false statements were made about me, claiming I run a restaurant and host parties. That is simply untrue. The photo used to support those claims was actually taken at the city's own Harvest Festival, a public celebration meant to bring us together. As someone who has grown up in Emeryville and now operates a local business, I believe deeply in its vision of being a vibrant, sustainable, and healthy community for all. As a longtime resident and entrepreneur, I want to contribute to this vision for all generations. I am asking for partnership, for the opportunity to share my story, clear the record, and work with the city to ensure that creative, ethical small businesses can thrive without fear or misrepresentation. Thank you for listening and for your service, and for giving me this space to speak my truth and share my love for my home, the City of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Welcome, you have two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and members of the city council, my name is Charles Orlando. I'm a resident of Emeryville residing in the building directly next door to Chocolate Mama Cookie Company. California has over 4.2 million small businesses, representing upwards of 95% of all companies in the state employing more than 7 million workers, vital businesses. Chocolate Mama Cookie Company is one of those economically critical businesses. In the short time they have been at the Emery, the owners and staff have provided not only a destination of diversity, but also of community, both vitally needed during this time of global disconnection and uncertainty. Perhaps most importantly, the company aligns with Emeryville's general plan, when it calls for, and I'm paraphrasing slightly here, vibrant, walkable neighborhoods where residents can live, work, and gather in shared spaces. I physically pass the space multiple times every day. I work at home, and I walk my dogs very regularly. My experiences with the space, the staff, and other patrons have been nothing but positive, and I would humbly implore this council to look beyond short-sighted, biased objections and inaccurate reports, and instead recognize the sense of belonging these kind and talented people are building is one that embodies Emeryville's very vision of inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Ashley Williams, the owner and head roaster of After Mav Coffee, the co-head roaster for Red Bay Coffee, and one of the very few black women roasters in the Bay Area. I was born in Oakland and have spent over 20 years in coffee. I am a collaborator with Chocolate Mama Cookie, a space that isn't just about cookies, it's about community, creativity, and connection. It serves as a hub for neighbors, young entrepreneurs, and local artists, providing a space for people to create, connect, and be seen. Some talk about protecting artists, but real inclusion means welcoming every kind of artists and giving space for all voices to thrive. We invite everyone to come and visit Chocolate Mama Cookie Cafe and experience the space and see for yourself and feel what we're building. Real community isn't built by closing doors, it's built by opening hearts and pulling chairs more at the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Vice Mayor and council member, I'm the father of the owner of Chocolate Mama. She was raised here in Emeryville, when Emeryville was full of factories, polluting the years, and she has a dream to be part of the development in Emeryville. The city council have done a tremendous job by turning this place around, where communities can come together, where there's- Emeryville's name has gone all over, from what used to be a factory full of industries, but now it's a community environment where people come together, where there are more housings. And I'm appealing to this council to please let my daughter be part of this development. Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Ramsey Parker. I have been a personal friend of Empress for over 20 years. We come from a community of entrepreneurship, from, it doesn't even matter. I am personally a resident at the Emery. But three of my friends of my entrepreneurship community all have live work spaces, and Empress is one of them. And it is amazing that 20 years ago, we didn't know that we would be neighbors in our careers, in our entrepreneurship, and in harmony, right there at the Emery. It's kind of disappointing that the extremes have been taken to have us here tonight over, it's very, very petty, but I will state, as I said it before, as the complaint parties were just like aggressive, and I didn't say this before, but they're assholes, and it's not nice. And we must clean that up, if you catch my drift. If you're an asshole, clean it up. So hopefully, we can clean up the, the community here in Emeryville, and entrepreneurship and community can flourish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Bell-Borden, and I am the owner of Exotic Links &amp; Body Essentials. I am also the grandmother of Leandro, and he has Leo's Tribe, which exists at 4310 Hubbard at Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. I would like to say that I am very proud to be a retailer, to be in business at Chocolate Mama Cookie Co., not only because I am with family, doing what it is that we've been taught and raised to do in our community, but also because we are on sacred land. I would like to say that for my family, we are Muskogee Creek Cree Cherokee and Mohawk, and we are on sacred Olone land, and we are very proud to exist. And what has happened and occurred at Chocolate Mama Cookie with the accusations has disrupted peace, we have felt unsafe. This is a time when safety is key. We provide a safe space for our children, our women, our elders, and our community. This is a space where children in the community, in the direct building, are able to come after school for after-school programming. We are also teaching youth entrepreneurship. We are also creating culture. We are culture keepers and preservers, and what we would like to do is just exist in a space. We are not intimidated by law enforcement or by tactics from people who are not in line with us building our community. So we just thank you for allowing us the time to speak, and we please ask that we protect the sacred land, the Olone land, and especially for Hushin Park that needs and wants us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all council members, and city staff. My name is Latrice McNilly. I'm gonna keep this short. I am in support of Chocolate Mama Cookie Co., which is not a restaurant. She is a community space who belongs in the fabric of this city. The Emery was created as a live-work artist community, and the space operates in that exact spirit. It's creative, cultural gathering space, no difference in purpose for a small studio gallery or maker space where artistic work is shared with neighbors. She belongs in the fabric of this city. She's here to build community, not disrupt it, here to create, nurture, and support resilience in this city, and we're just simply asking for her right to continue existing and contributing to the shared cultural life of the Emery and the City of Emeryville, just as every artist in a live-work community should have the right to do. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Welcome, you have two minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mo McNilly, and I'm here today to speak in strong support of Chocolate Mama Cookie Co. Recently, a complaint was filed against the cafe centered on, amongst other things, music being played during normal business hours. The situation escalated when neighbors took the step of calling the police. The irony here is that I have video evidence showing those same neighbors playing loud music themselves, directly in response to our business's music, further escalating the situation and undermining the very noise complaint that they lodged, creating a troubling double standard. The actions of these neighbors not only make the complaint feel retaliatory, but also highlight the broader issue at play. When businesses are treated as disturbances simply for existing in their own spaces, it's a form of cultural erasure. In addition, it does not feel good that photos are being taken of patrons and the space without consent. Our community is asserting our reasonable expectation to privacy and the right to know how the intent of any images taken are being used. This constitutes harassment, a familiar pattern of gentrification where cultural expression is silenced in favor for a more homogeneous, quieter environment that pushes us out. Chocolate Mama Cookie Cafe is located at 4310 Hubbard, and it is a vital, essential business and community space. I urge this council to please come and visit. You will not just have one cookie, I guarantee that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will now move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent calendar? We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a public hearing. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from the noise ordinance for paving work on Hollis Street, Park Avenue, 45th Street, 53rd Street, Stanford Avenue, Powell Street, Doyle Street, 59th, on dates to be determined between November 5th, June 30th, excluding Thanksgiving and other holidays. Do we have a staff presentation?
Mayor, staff needs to make some amendments to the resolution first before the presentation.
Yes, please. What are the amendments?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. We would like to amend the resolution to remove a few of the segments, those being Doyle Street, 59th Street, and 67th Street.
Noted, thank you. When we move approval, we will proceed with those amendments. Please proceed.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Philip Tost, I'm the Associate Civil Engineer with Public Works. I'm here to present to you on this noise waiver for paving work on Hollis Street, Park Avenue, 45th Street, 53rd, Stanford, and Powell Street, on dates to be determined between November 5th and June 30th, 2026, excluding holidays, for Bay City's paving, engraving, engrading for work related to Sustainable Streets Caves Project. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial view of the location of the work. It's basically Hollis Street from near 40th Street to Powell, which includes conform paving on the intersections to the side streets. Next slide, please. The request, more specifically, we're requesting a waiver to allow nighttime work between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and weekend daytime work between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM to perform paving operations on Hollis Street. Holidays are excluded from this request, and no work would be allowed then. Currently, the contractor's tentative schedule has the bulk of the paving work for all of Hollis to take place between November 17th and November 26th, dependent on the weather. They plan to work on one intersection per night, then move on to the block segments in between the intersections in the following days. The areas around the Powell and Stanford intersections and the block segment in between are estimated to be completed in three to four days. The reason the noise waiver extends to June 30th, 2026, is due to possible warranty work to be done at a later date, and also to accommodate the follow-up striping work to be done as soon as possible following the paving. Equipment to be used during the work is heavy equipment associated with paving, air compressors, jackhammers, street sweepers, roadway striping equipment, supplemental lighting. We expect about 20, 10 to 20 employees to be present during these operations. Next slide, please. For paving projects, a lot of times, night work or weekend work is preferred to weekday daytime work. Because there's less traffic and frequent transit services and fewer freight deliveries, the contractor can work more efficiently during these time periods, which will result in less disruption of normal operations to residents, bicyclists, and transit riders, and businesses along the corridor. Additionally, a hybrid of day work and night work is a costly option, since paving crew would be due overtime for potentially working back-to-back shifts. With reduced traffic during these periods, there are few opportunities for conflicts between construction activities and pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicles, making the project safer for the public and for the contractor's employees. Oftentimes, the trucks bringing the asphalt from the plants get stuck in daytime traffic during daytime work, which can result in cold joints or other defects, and lead to redoing work and interning, increasing project costs and delays. So night or weekend work will result in a better project, or product, excuse me. When paving operations are phased, oftentimes, there are uneven transitions during daytime work that vehicles need to drive over that may cause damage to their own vehicles or to an adjacent vehicle. Additionally, phasing the paving will extend the work timeframe by virtue of its inefficiencies, rather than the quicker approach of night work. Performing work at night, local business patrons are able to access the businesses they need to access without impediment, and people that work from home during the daytime will not have to deal with as much noise during their productive hours. With daytime and peak hour traffic volumes as they are, closures of roads during daytime would lead to significant and excessive delays for anyone on Powell or Hollis corridors, as well as there would need to be lengthy detours for our local transit operators, AC Transit and Emery Go-Round, during their peak ridership hours, impacting service schedules. The Powell-Hollis intersection is one of the busiest in the city, and the traffic control needed would allow, to allow daytime traffic through would be very complicated and create a potentially hazardous driving condition. Next slide. So as far as notification, we're proposing to provide a minimum 72 So as far as notification, we're proposing to provide a minimum 72-hour notification to addresses within 600 feet of upcoming nighttime or weekend work. Next slide. And we recommend approval of the resolution as amended tonight, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in said resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Philip. Members, are there any questions before we open the public hearing? I just had one clarifying question. You mentioned the different intersections and how they would, the crew would be moving, doing one intersection a night? Was that correct? But then, the, you also mentioned three to four days to finish the work. So does that mean any given intersection would only have one potential night where there would be this heavy construction activity?
So, at the intersections, at most of the intersections, most of them, four of the five require a deep lift asphalt replacement to basically regrade the intersection to match with the new bulb outs that we've all seen go in, to meet grades for the new crosswalks, more accessible crosswalks. So that work in itself has to be done separately before the rest of the overlay can be done. So the contractor is projecting that each intersection would take one night. So starting at, they would start at Park as the projection, and then work their way up. And so each intersection would take a night, and then they'd go through and do the rest of the overlay after that.
I see. But the noisy activity would be anticipated to be one night per intersection?
Right. Plus, the segments in between the intersections, because there will be grinding for the rest of the overlay.
Got it. Okay. But overall, the, that large duration, the November 5th to June 30th, what we're really talking about is the November 17th to the 26th. It's a far more narrow range.
Right. And that is weather-dependent, of course. But yes.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions before we open public comment? Member Pryforce.
What's the communication engagement have been like so far with the community? Because we've gotten a lot of responses about this.
Sure. We've tried to, we've published news flashes when there's major work that's been going on, like the signal switchover at Powell-Hollis that happened recently. That was a major lane closure. So we wanted to make sure the community was aware. So we published news flash ahead of time to make sure that people knew there would be delays. We've put out CMS boards, the changeable message boards that you see on Hollis Street, alerting the public of upcoming paving. We've added a new active projects website to our site, kind of where we can add updates about our ongoing projects, and this being one of them. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead, and we'll now take public comment, and I'll be opening the public hearing. The time is 8:29. If there are any members of the public, you can come to the podium. You'll have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Brad Gonkel with Gonkel Architecture. Thank you for your time. So we're a 10-person office at the corner of 59th and Doyle Street, and in the past, we've been heavily impacted by any kind of loud work that happens during work hours. The stretch of 59th, or of Doyle Street between 59th and Hollis is primarily commercial. A lot of architecture offices, one-story offices, and old warehouses, thin glass windows, et cetera. So what I would like to see is 59th Street and Doyle Street added back on, and that the night work, that the work, the loud work in the area primarily, or be only scheduled for night or weekends in this area, so that we, I mean, for us, when there's jackhammering or saw cutting happening right outside our office windows, we pretty much cannot work. And we're back to working all, you know, basically full-time in the office, and I think that's a benefit to, you know, Emeryville as well as our own, as our own efficiency. So I'm requesting that, along with the extension of the 72-hour notice to the areas along 59th and Doyle Street as well, and also just really wanting to make sure that we hold to the November 26th end date for any kind of loud work. I know that along Doyle Street, a number of the offices do holiday parties starting right after Thanksgiving, and a lot of places rent out townhouse or reserve portions of townhouse for events after that. So just making sure that the work is pretty much finished in that area. But yeah, primarily requesting that the night and weekend work basically be extended to 59th and Doyle Street, and the loud work all be performed during nights and weekends in that stretch as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment in this public hearing? Seeing none, the time is 8:31. The public hearing is now closed. Members, any discussion or a motion? Member Pryforce.
I just want to say thank you for sharing us how this was affecting your business, but you also gave us an idea of what were some recommendations. And I just want to say, I appreciate anytime there's community engagement, feedback, you know, we do listen. I definitely do listen. And, but it helps to prevent there being sort of back and forth, that anything that the city does, that we do, or anything, that if there's an issue, if you can make a recommendation. So, oh, you know, this construction's happening at this hour, can it be done at this, you know, that sort of thing. So then, we can just go to the staff, and we can all talk about it, and the staff does a really amazing job of trying to follow up and try to work something out. It just helps us a lot, and it was less sort of back and forth. So I just want to say thank you for that, and just a tip for y'all. But thank you. Keep giving us feedback.
Maybe in the interest in having more information for the council to discuss, given what we heard during the public comment about adding back night work, I'm curious if the staff has any initial thoughts or ideas around that, or maybe the rationale for removing, for amending the item?
There's no longer a need for those streets to have night work because it's unlikely that they will be included as part of the contract. So it's a moot point.
Thank you, Mohammed. Member Solomon, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Mohammed, for the on-the-spot response. So just to clarify, so there, we're not anticipating construction on those section on 59th and Doyle Streets as part of this contract, daytime or nighttime?
Correct.
Right now.
We intend to provide more information about that in the upcoming Transportation Committee meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Member Pryforce.
So also clarification. So the point that was raised by this business owner, what you're saying is that this no longer would affect them?
Yes, because the streets would not be included in the contract in the first place.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mohammed.
Any other discussion or a motion?
I can make a motion to approve the grant, to grant the waiver from the noise ordinance as amended by staff.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second. The roll, please.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no action items today. Next, we have department head reports.
Thank you, Mayor. This is your Community Development Director's report on planning Commission actions taken at their October 23rd meeting. All seven members of the Commission were present for this meeting, with Vice Chair Rod Henme attending remotely from Japan. The Commission unanimously approved a conditional use permit for the Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter. That's a temporary winter shelter to be operated by Dorothy Day House at 4300 San Pablo Avenue from December to April into next year. This was also the subject of a license agreement approved by the City Council on September 16th, for reference. The Commission also held a study session on proposed amendments to the bicycle parking requirements in the planning regulations. This item's going to be returning to the Commission for a recommendation to the City Council in December, and then back to you all in the City Council on January 20th. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Members, are there any questions for Director Smalley? Seeing none, now is the time for future agenda item requests. Members, do you have any future agenda item requests? Member Pryforce.
Colleagues, I'd like to request a future agenda item to consider a special public accommodation, extending speaking time from two minutes to three minutes for community members with disabilities who may need additional time to articulate their statements. This accommodation would also apply to individuals speaking on behalf of a person with a disability. Prior to their comment, the speaker may request the accommodation, or a council member may simply ask if they need it, meaning that if we see someone who may be struggling, then we may ask, do you need help? Do you need more time? And so this will just strictly be for those who are covered under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which pushes local governments to make reasonable modifications to policies, practices, and procedures to ensure equal access to public programs and meetings. This includes modifying a standard two-minute limit when needed for disability access. California's Brown Act explicitly allows councils to set reasonable time limits for public testimony. Adopting a lower limit as a reasonable accommodation is consistent with that authority and strengthens equitable participation. The California Attorney General has also urged local agencies to ensure people with disabilities have meaningful opportunities to attend and comment at public meetings. Adjusting public comment procedures to provide additional time is an example of a reasonable low-burden modification. Nearby practice shows this is workable. The San Francisco Mayor's Office on Disability trains departments that disability accommodations may include extra time to speak during public comment. Berkeley pushes ADA participation guidance and provides disability accommodations, including modified participation. San Jose designates an ADA coordinator and regularly invites accommodation requests for council meetings. Our proposal aligns with these norms while making the expectation explicit in our rules. I'm asking our staff, just consider it before we implement our new rules. And once again, this is just limited to those who, it would take them longer. And we've seen people who, it would take them longer, and they may need some accommodation time. And so I'm just hoping that you all can consider this.
Member Pryforce, just to clarify, is this, are you speaking about disabilities affecting speech or movement?
Speech, those who may have difficulty, and that may be either because of a physical disability or because of a mental health disability. Especially for our senior population, they may have trouble being able to articulate themselves. And if we see that they have an issue, then we can say that there is a, that we can extend that comment, and that would prevent us from any issues from, let's say, you know, an obstinate person who we all know, saying, oh, well, that's unfair. You're giving them three minutes. And so, but we'll say that this is specifically for those who we see are struggling.
Maybe I can ask... Member Solomon, do you have a clarification?
Yeah, and I don't want to do too much discussion, so Mr. Kennedy should...
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Solomon. We'd like an opportunity to review this request, just to make sure it complies with the Brown Act, and we can certainly provide advice to the council confidentially if there's any legal issues with extending or granting additional time for members with disabilities. I think we also noted on the agenda that there is language already on there about requests to the city clerk to provide auxiliary devices for people that might have disabilities to assist with public comment. So there is language already on the agenda that addresses this to some extent.
Member Pryforce, would you be amenable to discussing this with our city attorney's office after they've had time to research the issue?
Yes, and I just want to humbly apologize to the city manager. I tend to clear future agenda items with her first, but this was something that was just recently raised, and so I wanted to address it. Thank you.
Do we have any other future agenda items? Member Pryforce.
If my colleagues have no other future agenda items, then I would like to invite to the chambers the discussion about the Pledge of Allegiance returning, a discussion about us having the Pledge of Allegiance return, which I will demonstrate on the night that the first Democratic Socialist Muslim mayor of New York City, Zohar Mondani.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you.
Members, with a show of hands is their support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda. Seeing no support, the motion fails. The time is 8:42. This meeting is adjourned.